Call the meeting to order, please. This is the Village of Trustee Board of, Village of Riverside Board of Trustees Regular Meeting for Thursday, January 17, 2019. Happy New Year to everyone. Time is about 7:01. Please call the roll.
President Charles.
Here.
Trustee Sadeby.
Here.
Trustee Lumston.
Here.
Trustee Peters.
Here.
Trustee Pollak.
Here.
Trustee Ballerine.
Here.
Village Manager Francis.
Here.
Village Attorney Morris.
Here.
Also present Village Clerk Haley. Not in attendance this evening is Trustee Jiza.
Thank you. If you'll please join us for the pitch.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening. I apologize for the scratchy throat. I've had a cold for like the last three weeks, so I'm still fighting the throat. It's nice to see a lot of folks here tonight. Welcome to you all. Welcome to everyone who are watching from home. If you are here and you would like to address the board at any point this evening, I just ask that you be recognized by the President and that you make your comments from the podium so that the folks at home can see and hear what you have to say. With that, first up is public comment. Would anyone like to address the board? Mr. Goutler. Mr. Cicillack, please.
My name is Tom Cicillack, Riverside resident on Herrick Road. I'm here once again to focus on the Gold Star Memorial renovation project in Guthrie Park at the Ford Pole. The Riverside 54 soldiers who were killed in combat during World War I, World War II, Korea and Vietnam deserve a sacred, respected, honorable memorial in their Riverside hometown. Many of those soldiers were still only 18 years old or 19 years old when they died in combat. Sadly, just two weeks ago, Riverside's youngest Marine, private first class Victor Molinar, graduate of Riverside Brookfield High School just this past May, was a Marine for only five months and was killed in a very tragic automobile accident in California. He too was only 18 years old. And as I mentioned, many of the Riverside 54 were also only 18 years old, 19 years old. Hard to believe teenagers were recruited as our soldiers to battle in World War I, World War II, Korea and Vietnam. I actually began this Gold Star Memorial renovation project 12 years ago now. This is the middle of the 12th year. The veterans here tonight and myself want to be certain that the renovation project will truly demonstrate Riverside's honor and respect towards the Riverside 54. Many years ago, I put together a list of repairs that were recommended, 14 items in specific. I have that list with me here again tonight, which I can pass around. Many of you have seen this list in previous meetings that I've been at and made presentations. None of these 14 items are anything more than basic repairs, reasonable improvements for this 1920, almost 100-year-old sacred memorial site in Guthrie Park. This list is what we would like to have followed through on, and we here representing the American Legion Post and the Sons of American Legion who are now working with me on this project, we would like to have a list of all of the proposed repairs and improvements before we actually make the donation of more than $20,000 to cover most of the expenses. And the other item which I have, which Michael can pass around, is quite heavy, so be careful. This is the World War I centennial plaque since this is the 100th anniversary of the end of World War I, also the 100th anniversary of the establishment of the American Legion, which was actually decided upon by the U.S. Congress. This particular honor for the Village of Riverside is only one of 100 villages in America that received this particular recognition. And this plaque, even though it's relatively small, is a special honor for the village, special honor for the World War I centennial, the 100th anniversary of the American Legion. And I know there will be some discussion, I believe, later in the meeting regarding when, where, and if this plaque will be located at the Gold Star Memorial. Just in the last few days, I actually came up with another suggestion, which maybe you might consider in the next minutes later tonight, is the stone which contains the Guthrie Park plaque. We want that stone moved since that area should only be for killed in action, the Riverside 54. That plaque could be taken off of that stone. This plaque could be placed where that plaque has been. Keep the stone there. And then the Guthrie Park stone could be placed somewhere on the historic granite water trough stone as another alternative idea regarding placement of that particular plaque. So once again, we are primarily here to, once again, voice our support for the continuation of this project. If the project is approved with the renovations and repairs get started in the spring. That also is a difficult time since we have a lot of rain, so even if it doesn't get started until midsummer when it's dry, hopefully it might be completed by the end of the summer into September. So those are my recommendations. I thank you for opportunity to be here. Any questions? Anybody has?
Since we're on this topic, Mr. Bailey, do you want to kind of bring a focus up to speed on where we are with this project? Because the village is already planning on doing basically everything that Mr. Cicillack has mentioned, but our Director of Public Works can fill us in.
The rehabilitation of the Veterans Memorial at Guthrie Park is in the 2019 budget. I have a proposal that I'm reviewing to perform rehabilitation on the project. The main, most significant part of the rehabilitation project is the raising of the five monument stones, placing foundations under them, and then replacing the stones in exactly the same spot as where they have been originally. In my view of this memorial rehabilitation project, and I did address the American Legion Post, I think it was last Friday, I said from, and this is kind of based on what I've been hearing from various discussions at the village level about rehabilitation project, that the Veterans Memorial at Guthrie Park would look very much the same after the rehabilitation project as it does now. The, you know, it would basically be unchanged visually. From a significant standpoint, there would be some landscaping upgrades, but there isn't any expectation to increase the footprint of it, create any kind of sidewalks, or certainly any kind of substantial landscaping.
What was that based on, Michael?
What was what based on?
What was the decision based on to not improve the site, to rehabilitate it per se, but not to improve it at all?
Well, I discern that from discussions certainly at the village board level, but I think the Preservation Commission weighed in on it. One of the things, for instance, that was suggested was a sidewalk or walkway or something like that, and I think that was rather soundly, I'll say rejected. So that's how, you know, I've been proceeding is that this memorial as it is would stay essentially the same. And again, the planting beds would not be increased in size. The plants within those planting beds would be improved, I'll say changed, but that's my vision now is basically the Veterans Memorial would stay essentially the same as it is now, unless there's some desire to expand it or do something differently.
I can address that a little bit too. Excuse me. I mean, we did have it go through our Preservation and Landscape Commissions. The sense that, I'll speak for myself, I think one of the things that makes that memorial so special is that it is a thing of the past, and it has been in that configuration for many, many, many years. So our thought was that we're certainly going to, we're going to raise all of the stones. You know, one of the saddest things that, and I like, like Mr. Cicillack, I've been working on this for at least 12 years. We want to make sure all those stones are raised so that the names are readily legible when people visit, visit the memorial. We want to make sure everything is renovated and brought up to the standards that it should be in terms of the flagpole, the painting, the memorials themselves. But what we didn't want to do was take away its tradition. We didn't want to change it in a way that would not honor. I personally think of those stones as headstones, and I think that those men deserve to rest in peace right where they are. So that was really what was behind the thought that we wanted to maintain the integrity of it as an historic site on top of its relevance with regard to the veterans. So that's really what was driving that decision.
If I could ask two quick questions?
Can you go up here, please? That's interesting.
Hi. My name is Dan Creek. I live in the township on Rockefeller Avenue. I'm the Vice Commander of the American Legion Post, and I appreciate your comments, and I'm glad to hear that the flagpole also will be rehabilitated. We didn't hear that at our meeting on Friday. In fact, I thought I heard exactly the opposite, that no action was going to be taken on the flagpole at all. So your commitment to that also is important because that'll help refine the entire space. I'm just concerned 12 years is a long time to work on raising a few stones. And when we last met almost 14 months ago, I think, there was a commitment that this project would be completed in 2018, especially with the Post's contribution of $20,000-some dollars to help with this project. Wasn't completed. The last thing I heard, it wasn't even budgeted. Do we know that this project will be completed in 2019? Is there a firm commitment on the part of the board?
Yes.
On the part of Public Works?
Yes.
That's great to hear. Thank you. I hadn't heard that before. I really appreciate that. That's fantastic. That's really what I, what I wanted to hear. I wanted to hear a firm commitment from the village, and I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
Thanks.
Can I speak today a little bit, Ben? I just, I mean, I've been coaching up with Coach Joffler when he has to diagram things. And again, I think the key there was is to try and get, work our way through as soon as we possibly could. Government obviously moves painfully slow, as we all know. But I think we're moving forward, and we wanted to tackle the bigger items like the flagpole. We talked about the lighting of the flagpole, keeping the light, obviously we need to do that, as well as raising the stones as being kind of the most important items. When we took the list we had last time, we prioritized them. As we went between the departments, we talked about the priority of those. So I think that, I agree with Ben that there's something about that that's pretty special to me. I go there quite a bit when I want to reflect back on the guys that I miss, and so I'm glad that we're getting it raised up and we'll have it for that. Again, what else we can do planting-wise and things like that? Again, I think there's continued dialogue that needs to happen on that. It can happen on that, but there is some reverence to the space as it is right now in the placement. The idea of moving the one stone, the Guthrie Park stone, I think is open for dialogue as well. Thank you. Thanks.
My pleasure. Scallis.
Happy New Year. Ladies, Presidents, Trustees, those that are in attendance, and those watching at home. Sorry I'm before you and the Village Board on behalf of the Lions Club. For decades, Will Janiski was a pillar of our community. He was President of both the Lions Club, Chamber of Commerce, helped start the Audubon Society, and was on a few commissions here in town along with other community organizations. In his name, we have a new, well, no. For the last 12 years, we have a, an award goes out for someone who resembles these qualities. It's called the Distinguished Citizen Award. So if anybody knows of who resemble this type of commitment to our community, be asked that you nominate their names to the Lions Club. You can private message me on Messenger at alexander.gallagher5@yahoo.com. Nomination, the process is kept in private, but this is the Distinguished Citizen Award that we're very proud to have in Will Janiski's name. That's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? We'll move on then to reports of village officers. First up is my report. And first before you, I have a motion to appoint Gina Furry to the Riverside Historical Commission to fill a vacancy term to expire in 2021, and ask for a motion in a second to approve.
So moved.
By Mr. Ballerine.
Second.
By Mr. Lumston. You've all had a chance to review her application. You see her qualifications, and we're very fortunate that she's decided to join the ranks and help serve our village. She's here with us this evening, so please call the roll.
Trustee Sadeby.
Aye.
Trustee Lumston.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Motion carries. Haley, would you do the honors?
I, Gina Furry.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of Historical Commissioner.
Of Historical Commissioner.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard. Next up, I just want to give a brief update. We do this on an annual basis about grant awards for our village, and I enjoy doing this because I think it's important. We have the Boy Scouts here tonight, and before the meeting, we were talking about the nature of public service and that the reason we all do this and the reason our staff do what they do is in the name of helping other people. And one thing that I think is not known probably as much as I would like it to be known is, are the efforts that our staff go to, to obtain grants on behalf of our village. Every grant dollar we receive is a tax dollar that we don't have to spend. And I have the updated list here from the six-year total from 2013, or 2013 to date. Our staff has been awarded over $13 million in grants. And they do this primarily through their own initiative without prompting from this board, and every single department works hard at it. And so I just want to recognize the efforts of Manager Francis and all of our department heads and the hard work they do to help us make ends meet here in very difficult financial times. So I think you can be very proud of your village staff and know that they, they have your best interests at heart, and they're always looking for ways to provide our services as efficiently and at as low cost as possible, and also to go out and search out these grant dollars in what really is an extraordinary total over a six-year period. So congratulations to you and your staff.
Thank you.
Next up is an item that was held over from last meeting last year, which is an update on the garages and driveways working group. No action has been taken at this point. What I've done is I've asked our village staff to go back through this ordinance. It's a lengthy and very tedious ordinance, so they're going to take a crack at it first to try to determine exactly what, if anything, needs to be changed in it. And once they've completed that process, they'll be bringing it back to us for further And lastly, I just want to follow up on something that Mr. Cicillack was mentioning. Jill and I, and I know Kathy Haley also, last night attended the wake for Victor Molinar. Just a little bit about this extraordinary young man. He graduated Riverside Brookfield in 2018. Before he had even graduated, he had signed up to become a Marine. It's been a longstanding goal of his. He had finished basic training. He was just entering his combat infantry training when he was killed by a hit-and-run driver in San Diego. Just to give you some idea, his goal after he completed his term as a Marine was to be a fireman. So this was a young man who, even at his young age, had already accepted the responsibility of being a citizen and of being a leader for all of us. We got a chance to spend a little time with his family last night, and I let them know that, how much, how proud Riverside was, that Victor called Riverside his home. You know, his sister, talking to the landmark, said that, and this is from his sister Jessica, she said, "He was just passionate about serving the country and helping other people. He was a noble man, and he will be forever missed, and we all love him." I was not fortunate enough to know Victor, but I can tell you that he will always be remembered by me as an example of what is all, of what is good and decent in this country. So Victor Molinar Jr., private first class, United States Marines, rest in peace. Thank you. Manager Francis.
I do not have a report this evening.
Moving on with the approval of the consent agenda. On the agenda this evening is to ratify the voucher list of bills for December 21st, 2018, and January 3rd, 2019, to approve the voucher list of bills for January 17th, 2019, to approve the Village Board of Trustees Regular Meeting Minutes, December 6th, 2018, file and review the E-911 Final Board Meeting Minutes of December 10th, 2018, file and review the following, the Historical Commission Meeting Minutes of October 5th, 2018, Preservation Commission Meeting Minutes, October 11, and Special Meeting on November 14, 2018, the Community Development Department, December Monthly Report, the Finance Department, November Monthly Report, the Fire Department, and the Police Department, December and November Monthly Reports, and ordinance to provide for nonparticipation of the Village of Riverside in certain assessment relief provided by the Property Tax Code for historic buildings or certain residence structures within the Riverside Landscape Architectural District, a resolution authorizing the sale or disposal of personal property owned by the Village of Riverside, and a resolution authorizing the expenditure of the $50,000 for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code. I'd ask for a motion in second to approve. Motion by?
So moved.
Ms. Peters. Second.
Second.
Mr. Ballerine. Please call the roll.
Trustee Sadeby.
Aye.
Trustee Lumston.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, a report from the Departments, Commissions, and Trustee Liaisons. Are there any liaison reports this evening? Oh, you know, I forgot one thing under my report, so before we get too much farther into the meeting, just out of a public service notice, next Thursday at 6 o'clock in this room, we're going to be having our first in quite a long time, first Town Hall. I'll be there. Manager Francis will be there. 6 o'clock Town Hall meeting next Thursday. You're welcome to come. We want to hear what's on your mind. We're going to be talking a little bit about the facilities study, a little bit about the Groveland Burn project, but mostly this is an opportunity for you to come talk to us, to let us know what's on your mind, the kind of things that you'd like to see for your village in 2019 and going further. So we hope you'll join us at 6 o'clock on January 24th here in Room 4. So having said that, now we'll move on to the reported departments. We have Chief Weitzel here to discuss recent donations to the Police Department and to provide updates on MAD and traffic safety initiatives. Chief Weitzel.
President Charles, Trustees, and Manager Francis, good evening. So I want to start with the donations, and I've never briefed the board on donations before, just because we haven't received the significant donations that we did this year. So I asked the manager if I could brief the board on some significant donations that the department received, because I've been in front of you, talked to you about grants, but these aren't grants. These are our residents who have either walked in, literally walked into the Police Department and asked to see me, or have called me ahead of time and wanted to set up an appointment. And this year, in early December, I had a resident, husband and wife, call me who recently moved to Riverside in the last two years, and they said that they were very fortunate in their life, and they wanted to speak to me. That's the only, I got on the phone initially. So we set up an appointment, and we talked to them, and they came in, and they said they wanted to make a donation, and does the police, does the village have donation accounts? And I said that we do, and they said, okay, they wanted to set up a donation where the police could have dollars available to them 24 hours a day to use for less fortunate individuals that we've come in contact with specifically when village hours were closed, and we would have to get them either transitional housing, dealing with domestic violence, food, shelter, clothing. And I was stunned. And they didn't tell me I'm out. They just said, could you see if you could work this out for us? So then I dealt with the manager to see if this could happen, and she said it could. I set up a policy internally on how this would happen. I recontacted them. We met again. They reviewed the policy because I wanted to be upfront with them, and they handed me a $10,000 check and asked me to make the deposit and keep their information anonymous. They did not want to be disclosed. They wanted the program to be publicized so people would know about it, but they didn't want to have their names disclosed. And I really took back because that's the single biggest donation I've ever received since being the police chief in 2008. And they specifically said they wanted it to go to anybody we come in contact with who may need, you know, the police may be put a mother and her two children up in a hotel for a couple of nights so she can get her life together in a domestic violence situation. It didn't end in an arrest. That was one of their, that was one of their wants. Or pay for, maybe we could help them with legal expenses. So they laid out some stuff, and I was very, very generous. I wanted to bring their name forward. They're not that, those type of people, and they want to remain anonymous. And when we were done, after I thanked them, they said, I'll see you, I'll see you next year, is what they said when they left. So I wanted the board to know that. I wanted the board to know that this year, a resident walked into the police station in late December and said, what could your detectives use to do their job better? They apparently, the detectives had solved, had solved the burglary some time ago, over a year ago. I asked my detectives what they could use. A week later, the resident walked in with a $5,000 night vision binocular camera system to be used for surveillance as it takes video and photos. He came into the police department with the brand new device. He said, here you are, chief, in the lobby. I said, well, why don't you come down? He said, no, thank you, it's yours. And he left. And I've never had that happen. That was 2018. And we had a resident contact me. I thought I should put this in there during the holiday stroll, and they said, chief, you want to get together with your officers and run a hot chocolate stand? Now, these are all residents that came to me. I didn't seek them out. They came, and they said, we want to donate the money to domestic violence shelter. My officers participated before the holiday stroll on Olmsted Road. Then we donated $110 to Sarah's Inn in Oak Park, and that money was used for Christmas gifts over the holidays. So I just thought the board should know the generosity of our residents who come in unsolicited, don't want their names to be known, don't want any publicity for it as far as their own name, and just made these most generous donations. And I will, I told the residents that made the $10,000 donation at the end of 2019, I will let them know exactly where their dollars were spent. So I just, if the board has any question, I just want, I know you know it, but I appear in front of you on grants all the time. Well, I wanted you to know that we have residents that come in and just make pure donations to the department. And I'm sure I'm not alone. I'm sure that there's donation accounts for every village department. It's not just the police. These ones were just significant this year for us. I included the MAD report in there. I included the MADD report in there, because I serve as chairman, and this is going to be made public next week. You'll see my name in the front. The only thing I'll say about our MADD report is, when the state report comes out, we'll see impaired driving went down in Illinois with arrests, which I think is good. Alcohol, drug driving went down, drugged driving went up. So driving on the influence of cannabis, heroin, prescription drugs is on the increase. So what MADD has done, we've started to focus on victim services. So for the first time ever, we have a program that we run called Power for Youth, which we go to schools and present programs. We're actively pursuing legislation. We now recruit convicted DUI offenders into impact panels. This year, we ran 95 impact panels in front of 4,000 offenders. They were in the entire, they were both here in the metro Chicago, Central Illinois and Southern Illinois, and for the first time ever, MADD is starting with the NFL. So every home Bears game, we have a booth in the concourse at, down at the Bears games where we provide Safe Rides Home, either through Uber, or we will, we will pay for taxis. And it's the first time the NFL has partnered at an NFL facility at the actual football game itself, so it's a program that's going to go nationwide. So I thought you should be aware of that, because MADD plans on releasing that report next week. And my final report is really more of a group effort. Some time ago, the board wanted to know what the, what we instituted as the traffic study, the KLOA traffic study to get back to you. So myself, Chief Buckley, Director Bailey, and Manager Francis got together, really, what we really did is we updated the manager, your staff is the one that worked on this, and we went through that thing, we went through the report, and at previous board meetings, you approve these issues to be done, and my goal is here to get back to you and let you know that that promise we made has been delivered, and you can ask any of your staff here any questions you have. I will say that a lot of the heavy lifting was done by Director Bailey and his staff. All the stuff that you see that was implemented, putting to the roadway striping, a huge project for the Public Works was that traffic comming device on Lionel Road, that was a lot of project for his staff. It was all done in-house by his staff. So I really, I praise Ed and his staff. Myself and Chief Buckley went out and watched them for a while install the comming device, and it was quite an effort. So I detailed in there what's been done thus far, what's coming in 2019, will be improvements on Berry Point when the contract goes out for resurfacing, there will be more roadway improvements. Director Bailey could certainly answer those if you desire. And then there's the pedestrian that's going to happen at the center of town when they do their railroad tracks, which you should know that, while I mentioned Director Bailey and Chief Buckley and myself, the Public Works Director, I mean, the Rec Director is directly involved with the parks. He played a key role in helping us get 20 mile an hour speed limits in the park zones. And Sonya played a direct role in this landscaping, walkway improvement that will happen by the Burlington Northern. Not only is that aesthetically going to be beautiful, it's going to be a safety improvement, including some lower level pedestrian lighting. So Director App has played a role. So you could see, it was really your whole staff working together, and I just wanted you to know that those are the improvements that have been made, and if you have any questions of us, we'd be happy to answer them.
And for the folks watching this at home, this, the report that the chief is referring to will be available on our website. It's quite extensive, what has been done as a result of this traffic study, and there's more to come, so if you'd like to see the details, you'll be able to find it on our website. Any questions for the chief or Director Bailey? So before you step away, I just want to say to those anonymous donors out there watching, thank you. It's enormously generous. I also think that it's a testament to the feeling that our residents have about our departments and our Police Department, that they know that they can, that they have the trust in you and the integrity that you represent, that they can, they can make donations like this, knowing that their money will be well spent and every dollar will be accounted for. So I think that says a lot about you and your force as well.
Believe me, these, the individuals come in, they want nothing more, they're compassionate people, they want nothing more than to help others. And I sat across my desk and talked to them, and I could absolutely tell you, there's, that's their whole motive, is to help other residents that are less fortunate, because they have been fortunate in their own life, and that's what they told me. So I'm very honored that they would do that.
We live in a special place.
Thank you.
Thank you. This might, if you guys wanted to, Art, this might be a good time, we're in a little hiatus here before we...
Thank you.
They did remarkably well, sitting through me reading his consent agenda. Thank you, young men, for coming in.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you. I even got a tip of the hat, that was, that was pretty, that was pretty good. All right. Next up, Director App, we have a withdrawal of the request for special use at Harlem Avenue.
Yes, at your November 21st meeting, you had before you a petition for a text amendment and a special use for a daycare in the B1C district. You approved the text amendment to allow daycares as a special use. However, you tabled the special use to this meeting, pending some additional information being provided. The petitioner submitted a letter withdrawing their application, so no further action is needed by the board at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. We have no ordinances or resolutions. Now we move on to considerations. First up is a review and consideration of the Berkeley Road closure request. Chief Weitzel.
President Sisalak, trustees, and Manager Francis, this is another report, coming back to you, you directed us as staff to go out and look at. So again, once your entire staff is out there, we actually met out at the scene, Manager Francis, Chief Buckley, Director Bailey, myself, and then Director Bailey brought, he actually brought one of his employees that actually plows snow in Berkeley-Bird area, so we could get a better understanding. And, you know, there was a petition to close off the street, to either make it a cul-de-sac at Harlem, or to somehow or another barricade it, or stop traffic from coming in from Harlem Avenue, but of course, it would also stop traffic from going out unless we had the landscape that would only force people to go south. So we first researched, do we have to contact IDOT? We do. So anything in the bus to the state highway there, Harlem Avenue, we would have to get IDOT approval. And as Director Bailey could tell you, we would need a large turnaround for the circle to get an actual cul-de-sac. We would have to remove grass, sidewalks, and trees, and large mature trees. And we would also almost go into the private property that is there for the old Title Max, because we can't protrude into Harlem Avenue, we have to come backwards. So that didn't seem like an option, it's expensive, it's not budgeted by the village, and I think we would be wise, if we ever went that direction, to have a professional traffic study done by our traffic engineers. But we did look then farther down, as you know, there's an alley behind there, and we met there, could we close that off? Residents came out to speak to us while we were doing that there, and I'm going to ask Chief Buckley to stand up, come up, because those residents actually came out from the townhome, and they actually spoke to Chief Buckley, they didn't speak to me, so maybe he could, he could update you on what their concerns are.
So while we were out there that day, the resident was actually bringing out her garbage and said that she had viewed the village board meeting and that she was waiting for us and looking for us to stop out there, because she does have concerns with closing off that area, limiting their access into the condo building. We told her we were looking at different options and trying to see if or what would work out there. The way their driveway is set up, to do a cul-de-sac there would not work, because their driveway is, I guess it would be east of the alley, where the cul-de-sac could possibly go. We also, as Chief Weitzel said, access into the Title Max with their apron, which is also directly across from the driveway of the condo building, it would be very difficult to do any of that work right in that area. So the residents were concerned. As I was speaking with her, she did talk about, she uses the access from Harlem all the time, going, coming into her condo unit as well as going out. So they were concerned with us or the village doing any modifications that might limit that access there. She did speak with other residents of their building who also had concerns with that also.
And then furthermore, so I, at the direction of the manager, who like I said was, was out there, we laid down a traffic counter for seven days, and I have that included in the report, and this is a device, you've all seen it, it's the rubber thing that goes across. It came, the posted speed limit there is 25, enforcement tolerance 30, meaning you could go up to 30 before it would click off. The speed, the average speed limit was 31, the percent above limit was 3.5, it's low. What the data means on the following page is, I broke this out for you. So lane one is inbound, lane two is outbound. So lane one for that seven-day period, 561 cars came in off Harlem Avenue. Lane two being outbound for that same period, seven days, they had 266 cars leave, that averages about, I think it was somewhere around 32 cars a day. The speeds, there are some outlier speeds, you might see one for 60, 65. When you talk to the manager and you read the device instructions when we laid down, it could actually be a car that went that fast, highly unlikely in that area. It could be engine revving, it could be just an error that happens once in a while. But the traffic volume itself is low, the speed is low, and then I did a, I did a 10-year, or actually, eight-year search of crimes that either happened on Berkeley or Bird that were reported to us, and the crime level was extremely low. So there were less than five reportable crimes on Berkeley, and there was under five reportable crimes on Bird. Now, that's criminal activity, it's not traffic accidents or speeding or officers being stopped. So there is, I consider that low traffic coming in, we met as a staff, Director Bailey, Chief Buckley and I and the manager, and our role is really to brief the manager, tell her that we didn't think that it rose to the, to shutting down the street, and she agreed, or I should say, she agreed that we present that to you. And then my, one of the other alternatives was maybe when we do this street camera program as it rolls out over the years, maybe that's a good location to put it in. Is that something that's going to prevent crimes? Maybe. It certainly is a tool that we use to, use for investigations. The only other alternative, I think, would be to have KLOA really study that, but the board would have to be willing to expend funds that are not budgeted. Or, I guess there's always a possibility of going to the residents, right? Maybe in, what do they call that, a special service area?
Correct.
If residents wanted to pay for that. But I don't know if anybody's here from that area, but I will tell you that don't, that the people that came out and spoke to us that live in the condo townhouses, they're definitely not for it. So even if we were to go in-house ourselves, we better go speak to every, we'd have to, we'd have to survey every resident there to get their input, because it's only Berkeley and Bird there. And as you can see, the residents that live there like to exit there and come in.
But do I understand you correctly that, that really, you, you know, setting aside your public comment, public opinion, just in terms of the physical location, it doesn't work?
Yeah, in our opinion, Director Bailey, myself, and Chief Buckley, and briefing the manager, it doesn't, it doesn't physically work. Unless, I mean, I, to do that cul-de-sac, we'd have to, you'd have to spend big dollars in our estimation, and you would have to get an engineering study, and you would be encroaching really close to people's property. And I'm not even sure, Director Bailey, he could step up, he wasn't even sure that that, that circle would even meet the requirements that IDOT would require for us to touch Harlem Avenue.
From a cul-de-sac perspective, I think one of the only examples, but a good example would be Northgate Court. We want, we would want to have sufficient radius for a snowplow to go up Berkeley and turn around, go back. I think to accomplish that, there would be, I think there might have to be some private property that's occupied, probably on both sides of that, certainly the sidewalk would have to be removed and perhaps rerouted. And certainly, it would be somewhat west of Harlem Avenue, because there's an IDOT right-of-way, you know, we're not going right up to, certainly, we haven't filed a permit application with IDOT, but I think it's fairly good conclusion that IDOT would not let us build right up to the edge of Harlem Avenue. So it would be, a cul-de-sac type structure would be a substantial reconfiguration of that area, have significant impacts on both the public and the private lands there.
Any questions for anyone about this? Thank you very much for the diligence in taking a look at this. I know the, it might not be the answer that some of our residents that were there want to hear, but at least they can rest assured that you took a serious look at it and did the proper analysis. So thank you, gentlemen. Manager Francis, thank you. Next up is a discussion of a Hardscape permit application for the installation of a World War I Centennial Memorial plaque at the Guthrie Park Veterans Memorial. Mr. Bailey.
Thank you. Sometime last fall, the commander of the local American Legion post informed me that the post had achieved designation of the Veterans Memorial at Guthrie Park as a World War I Centennial Memorial, and that the American Legion had also purchased a brass plaque that they had requested to be installed at the Veterans Memorial. In a conversation with the commander, a couple of options were discussed, installing it as a freestanding feature, or perhaps installing it on the large granite stone that's on the east side of the Veterans Memorial. With that, the village staff initiated a Hardscape permit application, you know, it's an appropriate process, required process, I guess, for the Village of Riverside, and that certainly ensures that these types of proposals get due consideration. The proposal was submitted, the Hardscape permit application was submitted to the Preservation Commission in December, and it was submitted both as a freestanding sign installation or installation on the large granite stone, and the Preservation Commission recommended approval of the location of the plaque on the existing stone monument rather than a standalone sign. This should have no, and the commission also felt that it should have no negative impact on the village's historic landmark designation. The permit then is presented to the Landscape Advisory Commission, which recommended approval of installation of the memorial plaque on the large granite stone at the Veterans Memorial, and finds that the plaque installation will not negatively affect the village's landscape. You've seen the plaque, I think it was passed around, it's eight by 12 inches, and the proposal is to install it on the, on one side of the large granite stone, it's on the east side of the Veterans Memorial.
Which war is, does that one represent?
Pardon me?
Which war does that one represent, do you remember?
There's three, there's three plaques on it, which I, I don't know what they are, right, I can't remember, but certainly...
Do you guys know? Yes, yeah, if you, if you know that, yeah.
On the large granite stone, which we estimate weighs about 4,000 pounds, that's the one that's been sinking over the past many years, that has three plaques. The largest plaque faces the west, which has three World War I names and 44 World War II names. On the south side is the Korean War plaque, which has five names, nothing on the east side. On the north side then is the Vietnam plaque, which has two names of Riverside young men killed in Vietnam. That's the status as of right now. Personally, I mentioned the other suggestion, taking the Guthrie Park plaque off, putting this plaque in its place, keeping that stone there so nothing would change, and then put the Guthrie plaque somewhere on the historic water trough plaque or monument, granite stone. The fourth side of the large stone, hopefully it's never going to be used, but that would be the place for any killed in action, war on terrorism, or any other future conflicts, if any Riverside men were killed in action. Hopefully, that's never used.
The other question, were you finished with your, because I have a couple of questions, and I don't know who can, maybe Tom, maybe you can answer this. So what is the World War I Centennial Commission?
This was a commission which the American Legion commander noticed was... This was a commission which the American Legion commander noticed was available, he applied, and as the plaque states, this is one of only 100 villages in the entire United States, which has a World War I memorial. As I mentioned before, we have three men killed in World War I, one was a minister in fact, and that's actually a rare honor, only one of 100 villages, to receive this designation for the memorial, as well as a historical date of 100 years end of World War I.
I understand that part, but I, but if we're going to be putting something in a public place, I'd kind of like to know who these people are. I mean, what, what constitutes that commission?
I'm not totally aware of the actual names of the people, but on the plaque, on the bottom line it says "From the Pritzker Military Museum and Library Commission." So that's perhaps.
But I thought that was separate. I thought the World War I Commission was one entity, and then the Pritzker Museum and Library where it was.
I think it's all in the same, and it appears to me that the Pritzker Military Museum and Library is the organization that funded this entire 100th anniversary plaque designation, sorting through all the applications that were submitted throughout the country in the previous two years. I, once again, am speculating, don't have all the specific answers at this time.
Do you have something to add to that?
I think it's for the sake of discussion, it's almost, also worth noting that this, I believe this World War I Commission made a $2,000 grant towards rehabilitation of this Veterans Memorial also. So I think it's the same organization.
Correct. So as Ed just mentioned, the plaque was also accompanied with the $2,000 donation for helping to improve and renovate any World War I memorials throughout America that were selected to be one of the 100. So I assume the $2,000 grant is also something that could be demanded to be refunded if we would not ever renovate the World War I or the Gold Star Memorial Site.
You know, that's the second time you've, you've said something like that, and I just want to make just one point about that. We don't sell access.
I agree.
So, anybody out there who thinks that they're going to give us a donation and get something for it, keep your money, because that's not how we do business here. Having, having said that, you know, the donation is greatly appreciated, and it certainly will be used for the renovation of the memorial, but, you know, we don't do that. We don't say, you know, if you give us money, you get to put a plaque up somewhere. The only, the only thing that gives me some pause about, and it's a lovely, it's a lovely plaque, you know, and the only thing that gives me some pause is, I feel very strongly about that that memorial is about those men. And, we don't have anything else, you know, like that there, that, you know, with regard to an organization or the Pritzker Museum or something like that. So I would, I would like to know a little bit more about the, what those organizations are, if we're, because we're granting them a space in the most sacred location in our, our village. So that, that is my only, that's only my only hesitance about it. I certainly agree with you that if we, if we do install it, I think your idea is a great idea, that we would put it on the, where the, on the Guthrie Stone. And then, because it makes more sense to have that Guthrie plaque over on, at the trough anyway, in my opinion, because that's kind of the entrance into the.
Correct.
Because I think that I, I would, I would not like to put something like this on a stone that, that has, lists the names of our fallen. I just feel that that, that should just be about them.
Correct, that's, I agree with you 100%, and I also, as I've mentioned in previous meetings, feel that that sacred site should only be for the Riverside 54, and hopefully in the future, there will never be new names added to a fourth plaque on the east side. And I agree that that empty space should be reserved for a future plaque if it's ever necessary, hopefully it never will be. And this particular centennial designation, I also agree that I'm not in any way recommending that organizations provide funds so that they can be promoted or advertised at that site at all. Could be, another option obviously would be have that plaque indoors somewhere, not at the Gold Star Site.
Trustees, what, what do you think?
I, I've spent time over there and talked about, I, I prefer to leave our memorial stone as is and put it on a stone off to the side. I think that that makes the most sense. I just pulled it up on the internet, it's the U.S. World War I Centennial Commission was created by the Act of Congress in 2013 in order to help protect World War I memorials.
Excellent.
So that's what it's about, and it sounds like that the Pritzker folks are facilitating that, putting together. So there's a 12-person board, all four former living presidents are honorary chairmen of the commission as well. So just looking at it real quick.
Right. Mr. Sedgley, did you have something to, other comments?
Just to clarify, Trustee Lobston, so it's, it is a federal government.
Yes.
Agency, so to speak?
According to this website.
Because that, that was my only concern. If it's not a government agency, we could be setting precedent for any private organization that seek advertising or whatever.
I think the first organization is, I'm not sure about the second organization.
I think they're just.
Well, that's one?
No, I think the Pritzker is just one of them that helps fund it and helps manage it.
I think that's what Trustee Boggs referenced.
Yeah, I, I would want an opinion from the council.
Yeah, I agree with you, we need to research and figure it out.
Whether that's precedent setting.
So it sounds like we're all on the same page here.
Sure.
We just want to kind of vet this commission and make sure what, what we're putting there. Does everyone agree, assuming that it is what we think it is, does everyone agree with the location that's being recommended on the, that's currently the Guthrie Stone? Is that appropriate location? I see one head.
Since Congress passed the World War II Centennial Commission Act.
2013.
President Barack Obama signed it in 2013, the commission which has partnered with the Pritzker Military Museum and Library, American Legion and the Veterans of Foreign War, responsible for planning, programs, and activities to re-corrigerate the war subtenial.
That sounds good.
According to a Tribune article, there were six communities in the state of Illinois that were awarded, Riverside obviously being one of them, Chicago, Winnetka, and Wheaton.
And our Gold Star Memorial Site is one of the oldest as well, because it was started in 1918 after World War I, and it took two years before the Grammar School Committee of Parents and Students organized placing those four original World War I stones at the flagpole, which was assembled at that time as well. So that is another reason why we received that designation, one of the oldest World War I Gold Star memorials in America.
I really appreciate what you all have done on this. The American Legion has really taken a strong leadership role, and the $20,000 has made a big difference in us being able to do this project. So just know how much we appreciate what you've done, and that you've kept at it all these years. We've, we've been talking about this for a long time, you and I, so it's exciting to see it finally, finally happening, so. Any other comments for anyone? Okay, so I take it that we're okay with this? And we'll, we'll move it, we'll put it on the location that you suggest, and we'll find another spot for the Guthrie Stone. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Next up is a consideration of an ordinance, amending various sections of the village code relative to the placement of small wireless facilities, wireless support structures, and ground-mounted utility installations within the village's National Historic Landscape Architectural District, Attorney Morris.
Thank you, President Sells. The board recalls, last year, we passed what I'll call kind of our base ordinance, implementing the Public Act inactive that became law last year in Illinois relative to the placement of these small cell facilities. After that, we passed an ordinance, kind of dealing with the zoning aspects of that, and now we're back again, and, and as I've kind of worked with different communities and have become more familiar with the barriers and what they're doing, one of the things that I've thought about is, is the uniqueness of Riverside in terms of, of the expansive historic landmark designation compared to other communities. And because there are provisions in the act that allow us to give some special protections when we're within those, I thought it might be beneficial to take advantage of that and try to give us as much control as we can over the placement and aesthetics of these facilities. Steph, Ed and Sonya and I are working on design standards, it'll be back to you shortly for approval, but, but the stuff that we're talking about today is providing for some additional review of these when they're within the historic, the landmark designated area. And, so, you know, we talked about this briefly at a meeting late last year, there was a consensus to kind of move forward with this approach, but not much direction. So I tried to craft something as, as a first stab at this, you know, not tied to any of it, but I wanted to get the ball rolling discussion-wise by providing you with something that can provide some context for moving forward on this. So we got several different things that this ordinance proposes to do. One adds to the list of duties of the Historic Preservation Commission, Preservation Commission to look at these small cells where, where other sections of our code dictate that they do so. We have an amendment to our construction utility facilities in the right-of-way ordinance that applies not just to small cell technology, but any ground-mounted facility, utility facility. So, you know, sometimes they'll come along and put these boxes in the right-of-way, not just for small cell, but for other types of utility uses, and, and we want to take a closer look at those and make sure those are being done in a way that doesn't negatively impact our historic designation, that they're being appropriately screened, et cetera. So for those, we require Preservation Commission review and board approval. And then within our new small cell chapter, we've done some additional things. We have HPC review and board trustees approval of any new wireless support structures, which is poles, in the public right-of-way within the landmark district. A prohibition on all small cell installations and, and the new poles in the areas along the Displanes River, the Commons, or within the village's triangular landscape parks, again, within the historic district. Requiring HPC and Parks and Rec board review and board trustees approval of small wireless facilities and, and the poles located within the areas designated as public park and recreation areas that are already designated in your code, things like Harrington, Big Ball Park, Patriots Park, and Yang Gardens, and Swan Pond. And then prohibiting any installations in public parkways within the village's National Historic Landmark Landscape Architectural District on the residence or business side of the sidewalk. And that was something that was suggested by Commissioner Han when we were talking about this at the Plant Commission level. And so those are the proposals. You know, a couple of caveats, there are some shot clocks within the state law and now under federal law that, that make sure that you're moving these processes along. So we'd have to be cognizant of the fact that we may need special meetings on occasion or whatever in order to process these. There hasn't been much activity yet, but the, at least in, in the communities here and nearby, but the, they're definitely gearing up, and my understanding is late this year, and then all into 2020, there's going to be a lot of, a lot of application activity, so we want to kind of get this in place and be ready for that. But that may mean, to the extent that you provide extra layers of review for these, that we're going to have to stay on top of it. Because especially under the state law, there's a deemed approved grant, and if we don't get to, through all this and process their permit in a way that we're able to approve or deny it within the shot clock, it could be deemed approved, meaning it just automatically goes into effect. And, and so, you know, essentially, I'm just looking for direction on next steps in taking this more aggressive approach on, on the small cells for Riverside, whether that means HPC discussion of the proposals, whether you guys want to give me some direction to change any of this before we go further. It doesn't need Plant Commission review, we're not doing anything with zoning, and, and so that's kind of the gist of what's before you, and just curious where you want to go from here.
I got one question.
Please.
So when we talked about preservation, is this the same document that they were looking at at that time?
No, this is, this is all brand new.
Okay.
They, they were looking at the zoning aspects of, of that, which it doesn't really have much impact on HPC, but I think they had some discussion based on the minutes I saw that, you know, hey, why don't we have more control over these because we are.
Yeah, again, I think, I think during that conversation, I think that conversation was incredibly productive, and those folks do a great job of trying to, to continue to protect the legacy of Riverside. And again, the big challenge, I think, on this is going to be that sense of urgency that you spoke to. And I think all the, all the departments, as well as all the staff, as well as all of us as board members, need to, to look at that, because they're going to very quickly take a Google map of this place and drop them in at the most economical place they can, which, when I put that construction economy's hat on, is right in the middle of all the triangles and right on our front driveways and things like that. So I think that that's something we all need to be aware of, is that whenever that document hits the village, we're going to have to be ready and then go in, because there's, there's probably some really good ways to provide the 5G service that I think all of our kids and well as us want, and so we're going to have to address it, it's just doing it in a really smart manner. And it may be putting some language in here that helps us to have them provide more of them to get the coverage rather than the most economies for them. So I think that's going to be the push-pull piece that, that will flush out of this.
And I do have a few suggestions in the very last paragraph of my memo about how, if we're concerned about timing and all this, that we could have some alternatives where we'd only need to come to the board if there was a negative recommendation from HPC, for instance. So if they, if they signed off on it, then, then Steph was empowered to grant the permit, things like that, so that we're not overburdening everything. But I sent it up kind of the most restrictive way for starters, and we can see how that looks to everybody.
I, I kind of like that idea, what do you guys think of that? That we, it would only come to the board if there was a negative recommendation.
Does this all happen at once? I mean, what you said, it sounds like it's all in one document they're going to present it to.
I, I don't know how they've broken it up. I mean, south side of the river could be one phase of their program or not, I just know that when it jumps in, they're going to have contractors spun up to get ready to push hardware stuff out into the field, and some of those pole, pole-top devices are butt-ugly for lack of better words. And there are other ones that are more sensitive, right?
Yeah.
But again, they cost more.
Right, so that's where our design standards come in, so it, you know, we have to be, make them aware that Riverside is special and different, and we have expectations from a design standpoint that you're not going to put all kinds of loose cords and everything else. And so we'll be talking about those in incoming meetings and making sure that, and we do have control over those aesthetic aspects, even if it costs them a little more, I mean, we can't be unreasonable and say they all have to look like pine trees or whatever. But we do have controls over this aspect.
I think, I think the other thing too is that this, this one's also going to probably butt heads with our, our awesome effort with CalNet at trying to get as much resiliency we can into our power lines and getting some of those underground rather than overhead and things like that, because they're going to want to drop onto a lot of the same poles that we eventually would like to get rid of from a power resilience perspective. And then now if you have one of these devices on it, you get rid of the power line, you still have one of these things in there, right? So I think those two, those two initiatives are going to kind of clash into each other.
Other comments?
Just in response to Trustee Peter, so, you know, in meetings we've had recently with Verizon and a couple nearby communities, they've said, well, our, our engineers are looking at what we're going to need in town, and we're going to tell you those, you know, later this year, and apply for those, essentially all at once, at least to provide that initial base coverage. As, as 5G becomes, you know, when we, maybe a couple of years down the line, as there's more and more that the network has to support, if we start with driverless cars and things like that, they may have to increase the numbers, but right now they're looking at, what do we need to do to initially roll out 5G in a particular community?
I think from the initial perspective, I would be interested in reviewing it as well, not just having HPC, from the initial.
I agree with that, how I, what, after what you just said. I agree with that, how I, after what you just said.
Right, so we could always start one way and then dial it back if we find ourselves in a very kind of routine approval situation.
But this, I mean, a perfect example, when that rolls out, if we're under the gun on the clock, we just have to have a special meeting and everybody needs to show up, right? We all meet together in order to crunch the schedule.
Other comments about this? This is excellent work, as usual, and I appreciate that you've taken the initiative to kind of put this extra step in to protect our town. I don't think we're fortunate to have KTJ on our side. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And since you're already talking, you can keep talking because next up is a presentation and discussion of zoning notice requirements.
So Lance and I are here to talk about notice in zoning matters, and the impetus for this discussion is the fact that questions have arisen from time to time from residents, from board members, about the appropriate notice for zoning matters. And Lance and I, being zoning geeks, thought it would be beneficial and perhaps fun, at least for us, to give everyone a short presentation on the subject of notice in zoning cases. So I'm going to start with kind of a general overview of some of the general concepts underlying this, specifically for the benefit of those watching at home who have the same level of background and knowledge as the board members. And then Lance is going to delve more into the due process issues that kind of are at the heart of this matter. So starting off, zoning involves government regulation of the use of private property. We have a quote here from a 1925 case, I think it's a Supreme, US Supreme Court case. In its original and primary sense, zoning is simply the division of a city into districts and the prescription and application of different regulations in each district. And so that quote's from 1925, and that kind of coincides with kind of what we think of as the start of this era of modern zoning. So modern zoning, as we've come to know it today, first came to be widely accepted by US courts and then practiced by local governments in the 1920s. And, you know, if you think about that, that's somewhat well after Riverside started to be developed. Riverside's a little bit unique in that it started from the beginning as a planned community, so there was some thought as to, well, we're going to, you know, this will be the business district, this will be the single-family district, and we're going to lay it out a certain way with 100-foot frontages, et cetera. So what zoning involves is dividing a community into districts. There's business districts, there's residential districts, manufacturing, open space. And within those types of districts, there's sub-districts, or there's different types of residential districts where there may be more density allowed in a certain area, there may be multifamily housing allowed in certain areas. And business districts are divided as well into, you know, what's appropriate in one type of business district, may not be deemed appropriate in a different business district. So we have in Riverside, two different business designations, one on Harlem Avenue and one in the central business district. And so once a town is divided itself into all these districts, we look at uses, it regulates uses within those districts. So there's a list of permitted uses, things you don't need any kind of special zoning permissions to do, single-family home in a single-family residential district is permitted. And others are special uses, I'll talk about what that means in a minute. We also have bulk regulations within each district. So we determine what's an appropriate height for buildings within a district, what kind of setbacks we want to see on buildings, how big do we want the lots to be, okay? And so all that, all those different kinds of zoning regulations and government regulation affect property that's owned privately. So one of the underlying principles with zoning is that before private property can be affected, a certain notice has to be provided, okay? And we'll get into that more in a minute. But once you have your zoning code in place, zoning is an organic thing. So once a community is built up for a zoning code, or even as it's built up, situations arise that can't or aren't addressed by, can't be or aren't addressed by the zoning code. And so the codes, not just Riverside, but everywhere, provides for certain ways that you can achieve zoning relief, okay? So we've listed some of the main ones here. And text amendments, for instance, that's changing the actual text of your zoning code, okay? And when I talk about zoning being organic, you think about how changes have occurred in the community over the years, and those necessitate these changes to the text. You can't lock everything in how it was in 1925, when there were, you know, still blacksmith shops and stables and all that kind of thing. So those stables, you know, transition later to garages, and with cars, the need for parking requirements in our downtown business districts and minimum parking being provided. And now we see another revolution where with the advent of shared driving services and ride sharing and car sharing even, and possibly in the future, these driverless cars coming along, communities are starting to look at decreasing their parking requirements, especially in these downtown, more transit-oriented development areas, okay? So again, it's organic. We have new innovations, like we imposed regulations regarding solar power here in Riverside. That's something that wasn't really necessary 60 years ago, but now it's something that people are interested in, and we want to regulate that and make sure it's being done in a way that works for everybody. The small cells that we talked about are another thing, is changing technology. New uses come along that we want to deal with. You know, we made provisions to allow a craft distillery. That's a new concept that came along, authorized by Illinois law, so we wanted to open up our community and make sure that we were allowing that to happen. Brew pubs are another. Implementing policy changes, we talked a lot about porch regulations a couple of years ago where, you know, we wanted to emphasize that we like open front porches, and we're going to incentivize that, but we want to make sure that they're, you know, done the right way and not coming too close to the parkways, et cetera. And then changes to bulk regulations or things like that, we've made changes to sidewalk garage heights before, or even heights of garages as we start talking about things like car lifts. You know, new thing, new innovations come along that cause us to maybe rethink how we want to word our regulations. Okay, so those are all text amendments. We also have a different kind of amendment called map amendments, and that's where we're changing the actual zoning of a particular parcel of property or an area. An example of that is the gentleman who came in last year on Ogden, who was designated as a certain kind of business district. He wanted to do something that wasn't allowed in that, under that designation, so he asked to change his property to a different designation that would have allowed him to do that. And the board looked at that and considered that. And if that would have been granted, that would have, you know, we would have gone to our zoning map and changed the actual designation of that particular lot. Special uses, special uses are something, we talked about permitted uses, you don't need any special relief. For a special use, it's something that we generally said, that's okay to do in this particular zoning district, but because of the specific impacts it may have at a particular location, we want to look at it on a case-by-case basis. So a good example of something that is a special use in most communities is a drive-through restaurant. So we see, when you think about a drive-through, especially adjacent to residential, you may have lights shining into people's windows, you have loudspeakers, you have radios, you have cars idling, you have potential litter issues. So there's a lot of things that we want to look, car stacking, we want to look at how that's all set up, and with special uses, we have the ability to impose conditions that make it a good fit for a particular location. All right, daycares are another. We talked about the daycare recently. We're concerned with daycares about, the pickup and drop-off is often different than a lot of the other business uses. We have kids running in and out, not just for pickup and drop-off, we have them coming out to a playground, sometimes it's off-site. We want to see how the traffic flow is going to work, we want to know about the hours, security, all those different kind of things. So daycare are another common special use. And lastly, we have variations where somebody's actually asking for relief from application of a particular requirement in your zoning code. So I want to build a 24-foot-high garage, and the code says I can only do 22. I feel that I've got something unique about my property that Sonya's corrected. It was hypothetical, sorry. Something unique about my property that would, that I should be allowed to do that. And variations are important, especially in Riverside and these other older communities because it, we all know the topography of Riverside, the winding streets, the odd-shaped lots. You know, if you think about a new 20-acre subdivision out in the Kaler counties where you can divide it all up with a grid street system, have lots all exactly the same size, the developers offering seven different models, we all know they're going to be within a certain building pad, you can create a completely conforming subdivision in that way. But Riverside's not like that. It's almost impossible to create a set of zoning regulations that are going to cover every contingency or make everything conforming. And so we have the need for variations where somebody's getting relief. And, you know, just as an example of how odd things are getting, we dealt with one in River Forest recently where there's a seven-sided residential lot, and you can imagine the...
The setback issue.
The setback issues and what's frontage and what's not, and all kinds of crazy stuff that went along with that. And not only that, they had a main commet power line trunk running through their backyard, which added a whole other level of intrigue.
Now, go back one second, I want to make one point before you start getting into the notice. So remember Michael's example, by the way, good evening, everybody. My last one here. Michael's example on the property on Ogden, where they wanted to do a use that wasn't permitted, so they applied for a map amendment. But as Michael gets into the different notice requirements, think about this for a second because didn't have to do that, right? Could have done any one of those four, could have said, you know, I would like to apply for a text amendment to add the use I want to put on that lot as a permitted use in the zoning district I'm in, get to the same place. Or a text amendment that would create a special use that's possible in that zoning district, so then you've got both going. Or some communities do allow use variations, I'd like to apply for a variation from not being able to do that use. So there are ways that they could do, and it would be interesting to think about that as Michael gets into the different statutory notice requirements now. Well, notice in general, but more specific to statutory and local.
Sure. So, you know, as I mentioned earlier, notice is kind of an underlying principle of all this. And so when somebody's asking for zoning relief, you know, there's notice requirements, and there's three different kinds of notice requirements that we want to talk about briefly. The first is statutory requirements, such as state requirements. And these, the important thing to remember about these is this is jurisdictional, as a non-home rule community, the village must follow the notice requirements provided by the municipal code, the Illinois municipal code.
How pointless are they seem?
We also have local requirements. These are additional local village of Riverside requirements and procedures that we have voluntarily put into our code and beyond what's in the state, and I'll talk about those in a second, too. And then lastly is due process. And due process looks at the notice issue from a US constitutional point of view, and as Lance will explore in a minute, in rare instances, it's possible that more different notice might be required under due process. All right, so real briefly on statutory notice for zoning relief, so again, we must follow these state of Illinois requirements, and in, for any of these different types of relief, one of the base requirements is this public hearing requirement, okay? And that includes a published notice. And kind of delving into the history of that, the reason that published notice, and there's a lot of it littered throughout state law, not just in this instance, but, you know, when you think back 50, 60, 70 years ago, almost everybody was getting a daily or a bi-weekly or weekly paper. And it was easy for them to be able to flip to the legal section and look at the notices if they're curious what was going on in their community. And so the statutes use that as a way to get the word out to people, as kind of a requirement that was necessary in all these different instances. And, you know, that's kind of less effective these days, there's fewer subscribers, some people are reading online, some towns we've found now that we're dealing with don't even have a local paper that we can put it in. So, you know, you're publishing in the Sun-Times and even less chance that people are necessarily going to see it. But that's still kind of this base requirement in state law until that's changed. And there's other requirements with, under state law, in terms of mailing to adjacent neighbors in some instances, et cetera. But publication's the base one that we want you to be aware of. And then we have our local requirements. So these supplement state law requirements. Some are mandated in our code, you know, we have a 250-foot mailing requirement for map amendments, for instance. So in the case of the Ogden property, we have this property, we figure out who's within that radius, and we send them notices. We also have a signposting requirement in some instances where we put a sign on the property as an extra way to help make people aware that something's going on with this property, and there's phone numbers to get more information, et cetera. And then outside their code, the village also has some kind of voluntary things. We send out these e-blasts, there's social media, there's live streaming of meetings, not just the board meetings where these might be discussed at various points, but of the plant commission meetings, the PCC meetings. Those are then subsequently available on YouTube, so if somebody learns about something late, but it's still moving through the process, they have the opportunity to go on and look back and kind of catch up on that issue by looking at the meetings where it's been discussed. So those are some of the ways that Riverside supplements those state law requirements. As a side note, in looking at this, we, in working on issues leading up to this presentation, we noticed some old requirements in your code that may or may not be being followed. There's things like the village clerk is to transmit an application to the board, and it's supposed to be entered into the minutes at the next meeting. And so there are some type of archaic requirements in your code that are certainly not legally necessary, and we view those requirements as directory, not necessarily mandatory or jurisdictional. And what that means is a failure to perform them won't defeat or invalidate a zoning action. But all the same, having become aware of them, we should either start performing those, or maybe better yet, if they're not serving a particular purpose, we can just take them out of your code. All right? And with that, I am going to turn it over to Lance to talk more about the due process amendments.
Is this slightly to the right? Okay. So due process is a very odd fit with zoning regulation. So we're going to go back to Magna Carta, okay? And we're going to go back to the initial limitations on royal prerogative, okay, which is due process. And that is basically before the government either imprisons you, or takes your property, or takes your property on behalf of someone else through a legal lawsuit, like when I sue you, I want some money, and the court sides with me against you. Without due process there, it could be done without even telling you. You could find yourself under a court order that you had no notice or way to participate in or without a hearing. So the initial concept of due process has nothing to do with zoning, and it's actually an odd fit because it's a court concept. Due process is you have to have notice that either someone else wants your property, or the government wants your property, or the government thinks you're charged with a crime and wants to imprison you or fine you. You need to be given notice, and you need to be given a hearing. Due process is notice, hearing. Those are the components. It's a binomial kind of thing. Notice, hearing. You have to have notice or you can't participate. You don't have to participate necessarily, and that's why there are things like default judgments, but it's basically a juridical concept, it's a court concept. So how does it get involved with zoning? This way. Normally, as lawmakers, as a village board, you're not a court, you don't decide cases exactly. What you do is you make rules. You make... cases exactly. What you do is you make rules. You make laws. And laws typically don't require any kind of notice and hearing. Think about it. You make laws every day. You could raise the taxes to a certain degree under state law, but you can raise taxes. You don't need to send notice to every single village person, even though you are taking some more of their money. It's because it's a law. It's not a judicial order. You can change the rules of the road, change the rules for how somebody can drive through town, can change the weight limit on a road so that someone has a harder time getting through town than, than he should have before, could have before. All those rules that affect people very much, depending on the individual, all those actions are taken and changed without any kind of notice and hearing whatsoever. So how is zoning different? It's different because historically, real property or land has been viewed as unique. Certain kinds of contract actions, relief is available if you, if it involves land, that isn't, if it's involved in any kind of other contract action. And because land was unique, when zoning came into, into play, almost universally, the idea, and it was supported by some court cases as well, was that there needs to be a public hearing before you affect people's property rights, what they can do with their own property. And whenever you have a hearing, you need some kind of notice. So when we look at due process, though, it's not a notice has to be like it is in a court hearing all the time, or the hearing has to be like a criminal case. And as we know, even within the court system, the kind of hearing you get and the kind of notice that's required varies depending on what kind of case it is. Criminal cases require more elaborate kinds of notice and hearing than civil cases do. And small claims cases are more flexible notice and hearing, and sometimes discovery rules change, all kinds of things change. And the reason for that is because the, the U.S. Supreme Court has said long ago that due process is a concept that varies depending on the nature of the property interest, remember that's government affecting, taking property, and the imposition on the property owner. And here, we're going to talk about real property, land that people own in town. But it could be anything. It could be yourself, if you're going to be thrown in jail. It could be your money. It could be a repossession. It could be anything like that. So in other words, it's, it's a case-by-case basis. So we need to unpack those things just a little bit in order to understand them. But in the zoning context, it is that connection of real property being special that ties it in to a public hearing requirement. And whenever you have a hearing, you have to have notice. So in a zoning context, the nature of the property interest are basically, again, binomial. You're either directly affected or you're indirectly affected. And by that, I mean the zoning rule, either general rule or variation or special use, either you want it and it's affecting you directly, or the government is changing the zoning to make it less desirable for you perhaps. You're directly affected because the rule affects you as the property owner. It's direct. The other basic way to affect property interests in a zoning context is as a neighbor, as as, as a resident who's not the owner. And the law typically, through the notice requirements in state law, treats a kind of, the closer you are to it, the more of an interest you have. And, you know, in the state law, there's the 250-foot rule in certain cases, and the village has adopted that in certain cases. But home rule communities often lessen that. And in certain cases, for what they call minor variations or something, they might only require the adjacent neighbors to be given any kind of notice. So it's a flexible concept, but it's the nature of the property interest. Are you direct or indirect? The other thing to look at is how much of a burden. And one of the things we wanted to clarify here is when some of the various concerns that were brought to our attention, we looked at, we noticed that some of the cases that were being used for affecting personal, real property, I should say, were takings cases and not zoning cases. And it's very important to distinguish them because a takings case is where the government actually says, I want your land. I need it for a park. I need it to widen the road. You need to give me title to your land, or you need to give me an easement. And if you, and I'll negotiate with you, but if we can't reach a deal, it's so important to the community, we're going to take it. And the law allows that. But you need to take it through a lawsuit, a formal lawsuit, not through a zoning hearing before the ZBA. You actually have to sue the individual who owns it for title and explain why it's a public purpose. And then you're entitled ultimately, if you can't settle the case, to a hearing on just compensation. And the notice in that kind of case is being served personally by the sheriff or by an alias, alias summons personally, or there's no jurisdiction over you and the government can't take the property. There are ways around that if you're avoiding service, but generally speaking, you're entitled to be handed that piece of paper. Zoning's different. With zoning, you're not getting title to the property. You're regulating it. The government is saying, in the interest of people living in a close-knit community, close-knit community and living basically on top of each other, in order to keep peace and in order to make sure that people's investments are not diminished by what their neighbors do, we're going to lay right out front what the rules are when you build. And you've got to build within these rules so people can rely on them and know what their neighbors are going to build. And if their neighbors want something else, that's why the variation process requires notice to the neighbors. They get to come and say whether they disagree with it and why. So it's different. It's really rulemaking. It's more, it's more akin to changing the rules of the road, which can affect you to a great degree. But again, because it's real property, it's subject, those rules, in order to pass a zoning law, under Illinois law, you have to have a public hearing with publication. So it, so the nature of the interest, the nature of the interest is important and the, the burden on the property. If it's, is it a regulatory, a regulatory rule, or is it a taking? So let's, so let's look at that in the context of, of zoning and what we've talked about so far. Notice and hearing. So in pure legislation, just to review, there's no notice, there's no hearing, unless the legislature decides they want to hold hearings. And that does happen sometimes. If there's a taking, it's a formal lawsuit. And if it's a zoning issue, it's kind of a hybrid. And in zoning, the fundamental way to give notice of creation of a zoning code and changes of a zoning code is publication. And it's always been publication. And as a general rule, publication is sufficient notice under the due process clause. Now, you have to follow Illinois law, or it's invalid. But publication is always required and almost always sufficient as a general rule. Now, I say as a general rule because when we talk about direct effect, zoning actions can have a very significant effect on what somebody can do with his or her property. And that's why Riverside has a notice requirement when you do map amendments, because if someone's zoning designation is going to change within the system, the neighbors may be concerned about that because that person may be able to do something they couldn't do. And the property owner may be very concerned with it if he didn't apply for it, or she applied for it, because it may be what's called a downzone, okay? And the key area to be careful about under due process, in our opinion, is any map amendment and any text amendment where you're directly affecting somebody's property that's objectively speaking, probably a downzoning. It's lessening what, what they can do with their property. And there's a case where an Illinois court found that due process was not met in the context of a map amendment. Under Illinois law, under the statute, there's no notice requirement for sending notice. There's only a publication requirement. And the municipality followed that and was sued by the property owner when the property was downzoned. And they said they weren't given proper notice. They never showed up at any of the hearings, which is significant, and just a minute I'll get to. But they sued saying, hey, you didn't really tell me that you were going to downzone my property. Now, the key fact to know about that case, though, is that the government, the administration, knew extremely well that this person in the recent past had come in to prepare for an application to build according to the use that was allowed by that property. They had been in, had conversations. The government, the administration, knew that they were planning to build multifamily use, which the village decided it didn't want, or the municipality decided it didn't want. And it never gave any kind of direct notice to that property owner that they were considering pulling the rug out from under them and rezoning it to a single family. And that, it's, to me, that's very important because it's kind of a standalone case in a certain respect. But it does also teach us that direct regulation, particularly if it's objectively lessening what you can do in a significant way, should require direct notice. And that's why map amendments, we always recommend sending notice to the, to the affected property, the directly affected property. And text amendments, and think back to how, remember I, when I barged in on Michael's presentation on those, those circles? A text amendment can be a way to get the same result as a map amendment. And those also don't have anything beyond a publication requirement under state law. So what's really important is to realize that. And that's why it's been suggested, well, shouldn't we, when we do a text amendment, properties can be affected. They can, legal nonconformities can be created. And so then the thought is, well, shouldn't we just give direct notice, a mailing, beyond publication to anyone directly affected? And the point I want to make about that, that we think is important, is you have to be careful when you're talking about something other than a map amendment where you know this lot is going to become something else. And the thing to be careful about is that you won't necessarily know all the properties that are directly affected. It really depends on what the text amendment is. And it could also be a whole lot of properties. And the more there are, the more likely it is you may miss one. And so recently, it was the, the daycare rules, right, Michael?
Yep.
You made some changes to, to the daycare rules. And direct, it was a text amendment, and direct notice was sent to all the affected, all the affected property owners.
The property, it was a very finite group of properties in that zoning designation that we're able to identify. These are the 15 affected properties that we're going to send notice to all.
And the reason we're concerned about getting them all is due process. It's actually more equal protection, but that's related to due process, fundamental fairness, basically. And that is, in the effort to try to make sure you satisfy due process, you don't want to violate it. And if you give direct notice to people that are directly affected and you miss a couple, and those people happen to get really upset when they find out they weren't given notice, and they find out a bunch of other people got letters and were able to participate, if they were to bring a suit, that would create a significant problem because you went out of your way to give special notice, but not to everybody. And so those, that's why, that's why we say it's good to give notice to everybody direct. But you need to be careful and you need to be sure that you've got it all. You've got the body defined well enough. And I think you also need to look at realities, which is you have a very small staff. And so you want to make sure that if it's, you know, half the town, you know, one, you're likely to miss some. And do you want to do something more general that is cheaper, but as effective perhaps? The e-blasts, special notices at board meetings on the website. And so it's very important then to look at each thing you're doing as, as a case-by-case basis. You always follow the Illinois law, but we need to look at, is, how big an effect is this having? Is it a significant downzoning? Is it a case where we want to give direct mailing or not? The other thing about due process that's really important to keep in mind is that the failure to give a notice that might have been required will not defeat, or not invalidate a zoning decision if the person ended up participating anyway, but without the help of the municipality. So unlike publication, where if you don't do it, it's invalid, if someone was entitled to notice, like if the fellow in the, in the Pasolino case in the city of Zion, if he happened to catch wind of what the municipality was trying to do, and he ended up showing up hot at a, at a, at the public hearing and say, you know, you didn't even send me a letter, and he made his point, and he lost, his, his due process rights wouldn't have been violated. Now, that doesn't mean the decision can't be invalidated, right? Because there, we're not going to talk about that at all tonight. But any decision by a municipality that affects somebody's property rights can be challenged. There, there's a standard of review that's followed. And so that's a whole separate thing. What we're talking about here is, did you get the proper notice so you could meaningfully participate? So if you got no notice, and it would have been a due process, right? If you happened to find out and you show up and you participate, you've had your process. You've had your notice.
Continue, Mr. Martin.
So as we look at this, then, we need to look at, yeah, we covered all this. So when you're looking at legal sufficiency of notice in general, we look at these areas. First, you start with adequacy under the municipal code. If you were home rule, you could make lots of changes to those basic rules, but you cannot. So you have to follow them. And then you look at your own code, particularly the notice requirements, and you follow those because notice requirements would probably not be deemed directory like sending, the clerk sending a letter to, to the board for, for scheduling or something. So you want to follow those. And then you should also think about, is this notice enough? And, and in this day and age of transparency, you're always looking to provide more notice anyway, so it really shouldn't be much of a problem. But you do want to look where you're doing any kind of amendments where you're not sending notices normally, like variations and special uses and so forth, or map amendments, you already require notices locally. But, so basically text amendments. And you want to look and see whether this would directly affect a group of people and whether you can define it sufficiently enough to send a direct notice so that you're confident you've got everybody. The, the last point I wanted to make just real briefly is to talk about the concept of legal nonconformity, just real briefly. Because although legal nonconformity is a concern when you're marketing property and it can affect it, legal nonconformity is a necessary byproduct of being able, and as Michael pointed out, the, the text of a zoning amendment being organic, it has to be able to be changed. And where someone has already developed property, if you're changing the rules or tightening them up because you want to create bigger setbacks, modify certain things, you're going to create legal nonconformity. It's almost, you know, it's almost as night follows day in certain, especially when you're talking about the bulk regulations. And so legal nonconformity, the, the legal nonconformity is actually a protective requirement for existing structures where the law, by mandating that existing structures be respected, they're being treated as legally, legal but nonconforming, and you must allow them to be maintained. But constitutionally, as a property rights matter, you can, you can sunset them. You don't need, you know, if, if you allow a sufficient period of time, you don't even need to allow them in perpetuity, like you have some certain, under your sign code, you have some sunset. And I believe years ago, there may have been a sunset provision relating to two-unit and single-family houses where they were extinguished over a period of years. I seem to recall that. And so you can, you can even extinguish them, but most communities simply let them exist in perpetuity as long as they're maintained. So that's the point I wanted to make about legal nonconformity. So we wanted to have a chance for there to be some questions. We know this was an issue that some found concerning and maybe confusing. And, and I don't know if we've made it more confusing, or, or we've, we've helped. But we wanted to give this background. I thought it might be helpful.
You had me at Magna Carta, so.
Yeah.
So, questions? Comments from the trustees?
Well, I, I just want to say thanks because I know you've answered a lot of the questions that, that I received from village residents and, and understanding that. I think the bigger issue for the board and for the commissions is to try and really do a good job of adhering to transparency, especially when there's a potential for downzoning. And the downzoning don't necessarily become, in our eyes, it could be an individual property or device.
Well, that, well, that's right. I mean, I had this discussion with, with, with one of our partners where in a, in a given municipality that shall remain nameless, they were actually considering changing the zoning requirements to, to make them more lenient, you know? And, and so we were talking about what's, what would be required, and we're talking about whether, you know, certified mail required. I said, no, I don't believe so under due process. As long as the notice is sent for zoning, it doesn't really matter whether somebody got it or not. Because it's published, too, and, you know, people can get it different ways. But, so we, so we talked about that. But he also said, and, and, you know, it really, it doesn't matter as much because we're not downzoning it. I said, well, I said, well, you have to, I wouldn't rely on that because that's in the eyes of the beholder. It's very subjective and so I think that's a, that very valid point.
And again, I think the other thing too is, is that, is that the mission for all of us on the, on the village is to protect the village from getting into gears like Zion. And it's very costly when you get into gears. So if you're going to make a, a text amendment or a zoning change that happens to potentially have a downzoning, it better be damn well justified. Do no harm, or if there is something, it better be really, really well justified from a public safety perspective.
Right. I mean, that's, that, I mean, it's a, it's a valid policy point to say, we want to minimize creation of legal nonconformity. I mean, there's nothing wrong with that. I'm talking about solely from a constitutional standpoint, not a.
Thanks. No, that's, I'm fine. I just wanted to thank you guys. This is very helpful and I hope, at least we have it on record, people can go look at it. I mean, because I know, again, this was in response to a lot of people that were feeling like we weren't being transparent when all of us feel we've been incredibly transparent. And so hopefully we can continue to, to help educate and, and help just to make sure we're all, and expectations are well aligned. Thank you.
And to, and to follow up on that, that's kind of the question I had. Other than the, the, those archaic requirements that we need to, to get out of the code, had, did you find anything in our current code that gave you any concern in terms of how we currently handle notice requirements?
Yeah, it would be very difficult. Like you could say, well, let's add the notice requirement for map amendments to text amendment, but you really can't because if it's a, if it's not a text amendment that affects properties directly, you're going to be 250 feet from what, you know?
Again, I think I probably would have brought that up for us after speaking with this and doing some research, but it's, it's, it's a challenging, it's, it's, it's a challenging one. Again, I think just keeping everybody as well educated as possible and over-communicating rather than under-communicate without getting us in trouble.
But one, one thing that some communities do, uh, that you guys sometimes do voluntarily, but not always, is if there's going to be a text amendment, uh, sometimes the, the board will kind of bless it first and before it moves to PZC, um, so that you have an opportunity to consider that, you know, what's the impact going to be and what kind of notice, maybe uh, extra notice.
That's good advice.
Let me follow up with that to go, that, who makes this decision? Who, who decides what manner or what extent of notice should be given? Is that our staff in conjunction with you?
It depends on whether it's, if it's in your code, you've made the decision. Uh, but otherwise, it would normally be staff that makes the, the decision and they would normally follow the rules, but if they had any questions, they would ask us, is there, we, I, I think we might need to do more, do you think we need to do more? Uh, you could also, if, if you followed Michael's concept with text amendments, because those can be either of general application in various districts, or they could be, in the case of the front-loading garages, they, they were more tied to, similar to a map amendment. You could conceptually say, or one of you weigh in and say, hey, I think this, this affects people, and then discuss what notice beyond what your code requires as part of sending it to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the public.
So, so that's what I'm going to follow up on because as a retired lawyer, that, especially with regard to the equal protection aspect of this, if, if you start making kind of one-offs where you say, well, you know what, we think in this instance, we should give more notice than we are legally required to give, does that raise any concerns in terms of the village that the next time that we don't do that, somebody says, well, you, you gave direct notice over here when you didn't have to?
It's a concern.
You didn't give direct notice here.
Right. It's a concern because you may think, oh, this text amendment, we don't think is significant enough to warrant it, but again, somebody subjectively may feel that way and say, hey, you violated equal protection, you treated me differently. Now, the, the standard apps in any kind of racial discrimination, it's, it's a, it's a rational basis standard, so it's not a really high bar. And if you, if you really weren't trying to hide anything and it really was less significant, it probably shouldn't be a big deal and probably wouldn't trigger a lawsuit anyway. But you, you run certainly the risk of someone saying that and feeling that way, yeah. That is a.
And that's, that's kind of what we encountered. Again, from my, all the research that I did when we got complaints, we're doing it, other than a few of those archaic ones that we kind of came across, we're doing it legally. But the village, a lot of folks feel we're not doing enough. And so the question is, is what do we do and how do we do it without digging ourselves into a bigger trap?
That's right. That's a good way to look at it.
It's a double-edged sword there on that, so.
That's right. And you, you always have to be careful. There's almost no matter, well, you know, the thing to remember is no matter what government does, someone's going to feel violated somewhere, you know? I mean, it's just human nature, so.
President Sells?
Yes, Mr. Pollak.
Uh, I wanted to, you, you made one point that I wanted to make, and that is that I think it's important that subjectivity and, and judgment be taken out of it. Because I, I couldn't agree more that once you do it one way for one thing and, and someone just agrees the next time, you're, the village is in trouble.
The only, the only problem with that is, I'm sure that's exactly what the staff said in the Zion case. Why should we do anything different with, this is what the law says?
Well, and on top of that, make sure that your law and your rules that you're following are comprehensive and compliant.
No, I understand, but I'm just saying, you can't ever be like really sure, right? It's like when, when clients say, well, you know, so we can't be sued if we do this, right? Really?
And the other thing I wanted to just clarify is something Trustee Lumsden said, uh, which I started to agree with, but then, then maybe I don't. He said that we need to always, when we're doing a downzoning or a text amendment, we always need to be very, very careful about justifying it, which I agreed with, but then you added, from a public safety perspective. I just want to ask the attorneys, is public safety the only criteria that we need, that, that can justify a text amendment?
No, aesthetics are the other big one and, and I mean.
If we go down an aesthetic path, don't we need to have a competent aesthetic review board?
No, I mean, as a matter of fact, I, what, what I mean by aesthetic, aesthetics are objective aesthetics. Those review boards create a danger of their own by trying to decide what color paint people could use.
I agree.
What I think Trustee Pollak is talking about is there are certain setback requirements have nothing to do with public safety.
I don't see that as an aesthetic thing.
No, but it, it can't.
Think about the solar panels as an example. So, so that's, that has a lot of aesthetic implications, which is why we can make certain determinations as to where they could be in our house.
I was, I was probably just saying you can't say it in the street, right?
Yeah, but that's aesthetic. It's got nothing to do with public safety. It's not like they're going to fall.
And you can put them in certain areas that, that are viewable in the street, but there's limitations, so.
Yeah, those are aesthetic. I mean, and, and not aesthetic in the way you meant it, Trustee Lumsden, where, you know, we want to look at the design of your house before you can build it, you know? There are communities that have architectural review boards. I don't like them. I don't like them at all. Uh, it, you know, to me, if you want aesthetics, you know, regulate the amount of drive-in you could use and cheap materials. You can do things objectively, then make sure you have high-quality structures, but don't regulate taste. It's dangerous road to go there. I agree with that.
Other comments, trustees? Anyone from the gathered audience here?
The board has been kind enough to allow accommodation because I hurt my knee, but it got a little better, so as long as I can stand, I'll try and follow the usual procedure. I'm Steve Campbell. I live on Fairbank Road. I, I have to say that I found attorney's presentation entertaining. Uh, so I, I guess we'll have to go back. It's, it's not just notice that I'm concerned about, but if we want to go back to the Magna Carta, the thing about property is, is when you first buy property and it's, in its raw state, you get a basket of rights of use. And zoning, effectively, when you, I, I take it, what you mean by downzoning is, is you don't allow something that was allowed before. In, in effect, you are taking something of value from that property owner, which is one of the reasons that the, um, things like text amendments and zoning variations and special uses, which by the way, every use, every change in the zoning code in our zone, uh, code requires the same amount of notice and everything else. So it's not like this is special. In Zion, it was a map amendment and there's a minor error in the state code that allowed that to move forward. That is not the case in a text amendment or a special use or a variation. And by the way, you could also grant a variation and a special use to the same property because I have two of them. So, going on to what the village has published, there was a special meeting, um, to educate new members of the Planning and Zoning Commission and trustees. And within this pack that was provided to the trustees, it says under, it's a procedure of the PZC, but it's also a requirement. Uh, let me find that. Application shall be filed with the village clerk. The word shall in legalese is very important because it's not a request, it's not discretionary, it means you better do it, bucko. You must do it. So, um, it is a mandatory requirement that a written application with a map of the affected properties be filed with the clerk. Except for the last text amendment proposed by the village of Riverside, there was no written application of any type filed and no map, period. So there was no original application. This prevented the clerk from doing their statutory required work of presenting it to the village board for mentioned at the next meeting and inclusion in the minutes, which is the first documentation of it. And the notice requirement everyone speaks of is also part of our village code. It's written in, it's quite silent. Uh, let's check another part of the paper. Well, it is required of, oh, here we go. This is our actual code and it says that it gives, lays out the powers that are granted and what's required of different people. So on text amendments, it starts out with, an application for an amendment shall be filed with the clerk and entered into the records of the first meeting thereafter of the village board. So that wasn't done on all but the last application. So what starts the paper record wasn't done and the board or the zoning administrator or whoever is like responsible didn't even do that part of it. So there was no process there. In addition, it also talks about that it will, it will be published, but the village shall give notice to the persons to whom the current real estate tax bills are sent. On something like the vacation rental, by making that right of use in a residential zoning district, you effectively changed the zoning for everybody else. And as we found out, what you took away from those people was the right to quiet enjoyment because they lost it. So, and that's within 250 feet. So if you take 250 feet of any property that would be affected because you effectively, by doing that to the one, changed the zoning of the rest, it's pretty easy to figure out who lives in a residential district. So I, I have a problem with that. And it's the same for all of the amendments, that there was no application, there was no map, there was no sign posted, there, there was no nothing. So somebody that's going to go back and look at those amendments years down the road is going to find nothing. There is no paper record of the actual application. There is no way that you can justify that as correct and proper process. And the notice is only part of it. And to talk about these laws like they're archaic, it appears more that they are just inconvenient. And if you would have had to have given notice to everybody that the text amendments have affected, then the cost becomes a factor, and I agree with that. But just because it costs more money doesn't mean you shouldn't have to do it, as we can talk about with many of the, uh, changes to the zoning text that are going to cost people more money. So that's the issue with it. And to remove any of it, completely disregards the importance of previous boards. It, it appears that the village has, with complete disdain and disrespect for the existing laws, not complied with many components of them, and, you know, and it goes even further with zoning. The code called, gives the responsibility for being the zoning administrator to the village manager unless they would care to appoint someone. Now, I made a FOIA request for a letter of office, there is none, and the village manager advised me that, well, it was in the job description and she thought Peter made Ms. App the zoning administrator. Well, even if he did, that, that appointment would have fade, would have gone away, died when he left the village and the new village manager starts out as the zoning administrator. So, and then there we have a single individual that is the head of the community development department. She's the planner. She appears to be the person seeking entitlements in terms of changes to the zoning code, the petitioner for all of these text amendments. And she's the zoning administrator and she's the secretary for the PZC. Maybe I'm just paranoid in my old age, but if that doesn't create the perfect situation for conflict of interest in terms of jobs, if I have a problem with what she did, I have to go and file an appeal with her. Yeah, good luck with that. And the, the fact that none of this process is being followed again, it shows a complete ignorance of the law, which I was taught early ignorance is no excuse, except in the zoning seminar, Mr. Mars and Mr. Molina actually addressed this, the legality, the special circumstance for text amendments and for, for zoning in general because it's real property and that it has definite legalistic connotations. And then tonight he talks about so much stuff that has nothing to do with notice or process and it, it completely disregards. I mean, the village code calls for certain things and he's saying that the minimum legal requirements are being followed. In my world, that's writing fiction with your mouth. And since they, in the zoning seminar can advise the village of requirements that are one-way, and then I get the, the answers at public board meetings about the village has followed the minimum of the law, is the village interested in following the very minimum of the law? That's really a great thing. So overall, you're, you're paying attention to the law and following it has about a zero success rate. I think that the board, that, the zoning text amendments that you have passed, they're not valid because they weren't done according to the required process by the village of Riverside, if we completely ignore the state. And you require them for lots of people, in fact, for everybody except yourselves, and I could not find, and I've read the entire code many times, over many years, the, the different versions of it, and I cannot find an exemption for, for the village board in any of it, from the required law for things at the village board level pertaining to the zoning code. So they don't count. And with the disrespect that you seem to show of the prior people's laws, why should anybody listen to yours? It's just, it's teaching people from like the bad way to do it, not to mention the fact that they're not legally enforced, so they can ignore them anyway. And the village is going to be completely unsuccessful if they want to turn into litigation. to prove it. But there are serious problems with the entire process and operation of the zoning code and the zoning department and responsibilities that are very important. If the manager wants to appoint somebody, that's up to her. It's her, at her will. But there has to be a letter of office because of the importance, and you can't have one person doing all these jobs that interlink and she's not doing it. There was no application filed. How do you, how does the village justify there wasn't even a written application? So, you know, zoning, when you do things, you take rights away from people, rights of use that they have with the property. Rights of use have value. We don't know what they are. They could be little, they could be a lot, but that's why zoning and the things are in the place that they are. So if the way you're going to get around it is you're just going to take out the archaic requirements, that's fine. What are you going to do about everything you did before? Just go, "Never mind"? This is not Saturday Night Live. This is serious. I'm not trying to make problems for people, but the due process of what's required is fully ignored. There was one meeting where, at the PZC, where Sonia's taking notes, and at the beginning, they asked Trustee Setteby if he needed to be sworn in, if he was going to testify, and he said, "No." And then the chairman asked Sonia, "Oh, do you need to swear yourself in?" And everybody had a good chuckle at that. And then Sonia said, "Oh, no, I'll tell the truth. I promise." This is not swearing in a witness. That's a requirement. It's, this is just a circus. It really is. It's a Chinese fire drill, and the way, the zoning code is very important, and the process is important. You're the keepers of the process, and you act like it doesn't have any value at all. You have the opportunity to fix it. All you have to do is acknowledge that it wasn't done properly, people made mistakes, and now you have to go back and either redo them all or take all that extra stuff out of the code book. So, and if you could all be okay with going along with this, oh, that's also so much to thank you for listening and putting up with me. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board on this issue? Gentlemen, thank you. I thought that was very informative and very helpful. Yes?
I'd just, for the public, like to state that we have, working for the village for many years now, one of the top municipal law firms in the country, not just Chicago, but in the country. And I am quite confident that we have followed all legal procedures, and they have given us nothing but good guidance over the years. That's not to mention our staff, who does, is also very conscientious about our process, and I am quite confident that we have followed all legal processes through the years that I've been involved with the village government.
I agree with that. We have no need for, there is no new business. We have no need for an executive session, so I ask for a motion, second, to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. Lubston, second. Aye. Mr. Setteby, please call the roll.
Trustee Setteby.
Aye.
Trustee Lubston.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Trustee Pollock.
Aye.
Trustee Bowden.
Aye.
Means adjourned. Thank you. Good night.